Okay, this time we'll ask the clerk to call the role for the quorum.
Mr. Blake Moore.
Present.
Mr. Askew.
Here.
Mr. Whitfield.
Present.
Chairman Whitfield, excuse me. Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Stoltz.
Present.
Thank you all, everyone's here tonight. As we move into the approval of our agenda, gentlemen, I do have one resolution that I'd like for us to be able to amend the agenda. This is Resolution R 68-21, and this is to fill a vacancy on our alcoholic beverage board. So this is a board that's, our commission board, is very active, and we want to keep it completely filled with members, but we've had a vacancy come up due to a resignation. So I'd like to make the motion that we approve the agenda with the modification of Resolution R 68-21.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda, so.
Okay, we have a, have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda's approved with the modification. Okay, you have in your packet tonight the minutes from our December 9th meeting, a regular scheduled meeting here on December the 9th. Our board clerks done a good job preparing those minutes, do we have any questions or concerns about those minutes?
No.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved as presented. Okay, then we did have a special called Work Session at the Civic Center on December 15th, and the only item on there was a presentation from ACCG on our defined pension fund, and had many of our members of our defined pension fund there, so our board clerks done a great job of capturing that meeting, so do we have a motion to approve these minutes as well?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved as presented as well. Okay, under our unfinished business, we do have a variance that was property located at 41 Lee School Road, Lafette, Georgia, tax map impartial 0-482-0188. So this is an unfinished item, what's the pleasure of the board on this item?
Chair, I have some information I'd like to share with the board on this. So I went down to look at Ms. Renaud's property, and she was not there, but she gave me permission to look at it, and I followed up with David Brown regarding this. It's gonna need quite a bit of work, and currently Ms. Renaud is in the process of getting some estimates. It's also gonna need a new septic system, and I think Mr. Brown has been in touch with environmental health, and we may get him to speak on that, but she's got a lot of decisions to make regarding taking care of this financially, and would you like to come up, Dave, just to say a few things?
What we found when we went with this young lady, she's got, she says one acre, Q Public says .57, and where she's putting the, wanting to put the mobile home, there's an existing septic system, but it's not in records with environmental health. So Jason from Environmental Health came out and said with the soil, he took some samples just looking at it, and he said it would look like if it was gonna be able to be hooked to the mobile home, it would have to be put up on the hill with the lift station due to the density of the soil and there's state water running within 50 foot of where she wants to put the mobile home. And Jason figured, it's in your packet, that the least that would cost would be $10,000 just to put the septic system in, and it could be as much as $15,000 if she could get a report, a soil test that would accept it. And then I pulled the Q Public, and everything around her property on all four sides is GDOT, in front, back, sides, it, everything's GDOT. So where Jason's talking about putting the septic system is on GDOT property. So that would have to be through there. And then in your packet, there's not any names on it, but there's, there's three repairs, one for the lumber to fix the floor and the walls, which came to $7,500, the electrical to replace everything is $3180, and the, I'm sorry, the plumbing is $3180, and the electrical's gonna be $3,500. That's just, that's just the material, they're, these, these people were not gonna charge her any labor. So she's looking at almost $30,000 if the soil report will come back to where she can put it, if she can get it on her property without getting on GDOT. But with GDOT, I'd have to check, see what their setbacks are, because our setbacks from GDOT property is whatever they say plus 35 foot.
And she's just got .57 acres there, right?
That's what Q Public says, the deed to her property is in there, it doesn't actually say the exact property, she says she's got right at one. But I'm not sure with all the setbacks, because her property line shows going almost to the middle of the northbound Highway 27, and we know that's not right.
Okay.
So she's looking at roughly $30,000 just for materials to be able to get the mobile home level.
So knowing that Ms. Renaud has some decisions to make, I would like to make a motion to remove this agenda item from this agenda with no action until she has a chance to follow back up with Mr. Brown.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, just to remove this, and that would give it the ability to come back up at a later time if Ms. Renaud decided to move forward with those repairs. So do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this motion is carried to remove that from the agenda. Okay, the next two items on our unfinished business is where we tabled at our last meeting in reference to the documentation of the defined benefit fund, to move that over to ACCG. We did have a work session as we had the minutes from a week ago, so I'd like to make the motion that we also just remove this from the agenda at this time, this is still being worked on. We've had some more conversation, and the trustee board has been collaborating to make sure we get everything right and move this thing forward, so, so not sure how long that may take us to get that done, so this doesn't just keep coming up every meeting. I'd like to make a motion that we just remove this from the agenda, and when we get everything finalized, then we'll re-present at that time. So do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? So all in favor to remove both of these items from the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll remove both of those. Okay, under New Business, we have a Resolution R 62-21, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a chairperson of the Walker County Planning Commission, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairperson of the board is to appoint members and chairpersons to all committees of the board with the approval of the board, and whereas Chairman Shannon K. Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve as the chairperson of the Walker County Planning Commission for a term ending on December 31st, 2022, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that I, that the appointment of Michael Haney to serve as the chairperson of Walker County Planning Commission is approved, so resolved and adopted the 30th day, 2021. Currently, through 2021, Michael Haney has been the sitting chairperson of the Planning Commission. Under our Enabling Act, it states that all chairpersons for any of our standing committees or commissions is to be appointed through this process of resolution, so it's my recommendation that we continue with Michael Haney as the chairperson of the Planning Commission, so do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution passes. Okay, the next is Resolution R 63-21, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, whereas Georgia Governor George Busby appointed Act 421, March 23rd, 1977, creating the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority as a political subdivision of the state of Georgia and a public corporation, and whereas Section 2B of the Act 421 governs the appointments and terms of service of members of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chair, chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees for the board with the approval of the board, whereas vacancies exist on the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority due to the expiration of term of Michael Haney, whereas Chairman Shannon K. Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as the member of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, Michael Haney, for the term ending on May 31st, 2026, whereas Michael Haney is duly qualified to serve as a member of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority, and has expressed willingness to continue to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Michael Haney is approved, so resolved and adopted the 30th day, 2021. Michael was appointed originally to this board in December of 2016, served with him on the board, he brings a lot of value and experience being the city manager, there's a lot of continuities and connections with our sewer system, with the city of Chickamauga. We've got quite a few projects going on, and he brings a, a level of knowledge and experience that I'd like to see him continue to serve in this capacity, so I make the motion that we reappoint Michael Haney, term ending on May 31st, 2026. So do we have a second to this motion?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution's approved. Okay, Resolution R 64-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member to the Walker County Animal Control Board, whereas OCGA 4-823A2 provides that Animal Control Board is authorized charge with exercising those powers set forth in OCGA 4A-23 as determined by the county governing authority, where Section 6-109Aid of the Code of Walker County delegates the authority to appoint members to the Walker County Animal Control Board, to the chairman of the Board of the Commissioners of Walker County Board with approval of the board, and whereas a vacancy exists on the Animal Control Board, whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as a member of the Animal Control Board, Cecilia Westbrooks, for a term ending on December 31st, 2022, whereas Cecilia Westbrooks is duly qualified to serve as a member of the Animal Control Board and expressed a willingness to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, the appointment of Cecilia Westbrooks is approved, so resolved and adopted the 30th day, 2021. Again, as what we've been trying to do on all these boards is take recommendations from each district and try to balance out all of our boards and commissions and committees with as much of an equal representation as possible through these different boards, and so this was a recommendation that Commissioner Hart had, and he's reached out to her, Ms. Westbrooks is willing to serve, and so I'll make the motion that we approve her to this Animal Control Board, so do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Ms. Westbrooks is appointed. Okay, this next one here, I'm not gonna read this, but this is just a, an extension of the current moratorium for large-scale commercial poultry houses. This is gonna give us some more time to work on this, as many of you board members know, and some of you have actually been involved in collaboration and working with other county commissioners and other communities, working on this as, as a somewhat of a regional project. We don't quite have everything figured out, and so this does not prevent our local farmers per, you know, expanding their chicken operation if it's less than eight houses, so if someone has two houses and wanna add two more, whatever, they can do that, this just addresses the moratorium that we've had currently in place to just extend this for another six months on any large-scale operations. So is there any questions on this resolution? Okay, so we have a motion to approve Resolution R 65-21 tonight.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's approved to extend for six months. Okay, we have a Resolution R 66-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint members to the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, whereas the duty delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all committees and the board with the approval of the board, whereas a vacancy exists on the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve for the member of the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and this is for Dean Kelly, he currently serves in this capacity, but his term has expired, so this would extend his term until December 31st, 2024, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Dean Kelly is hereby approved, so resolved and adopted the 30th day of 2021. Dean Kelly's been a great board member, brings a lot of knowledge to this board, he's been very active, and I have spoken with him, and he is willing to continue to serve in this capacity, so I make the motion that we approve for Dean Kelly to be reappointed to the Alcoholic Beverage Board, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Mr. Kelly is reappointed. Okay, this, next one here, I'm not gonna read this one, this is quite lengthy as well, but this is Resolution authorizing membership into our association, our ACCG interlock risk management program. This is just a standard form resolution that they require, this is what was given to us, as you can see, it's a simply fill in the blank of Walker County and the title of our chairman or CEO type, and this is just a resolution to give acknowledgement officially that the board members are in agreeance to move forward with the ACCG program on our general liability and auto vehicle coverage that would begin the first of the year, so this is again just standard documentation, so is there any questions or comments or concerns with this resolution? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution is approved. Furthermore, this is another document for the same thing, this is just another intergovernmental agreement contract, also to move forward with the same program, the, what they call the Irma Risk Management Program. Again, I'm not gonna read all this, this is a lot of language here, and I know y'all have had time to look at this, and I've discussed this with each of you individually, so is there any concerns or questions or issues with the intergovernmental contract with ACCG, Irma, for management of the liability and property damage risk? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this agreement?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item that we have tonight is our local marketing organization agreement, and this is an agreement between Walker County Government and the Walker County Chamber of Commerce, since they are a nonprofit 501(c) organization in Walker County. This is also just an extension or renewal of this contract. Under the state laws with your hotel motel tax that is collected, the portion that is to be used and allocated for advertisement and promoting of tourism in Walker County has to be managed through a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. So this is a revision of what we had last year with a couple of modifications I'll point out to you. One, any reference to our old form of government, a sole commissioner's been removed and inserted, you know, chairman or board of commissioners where appropriate, and then on page two, number five there at the top, talks about the county shall provide from time to time written requests to the organization for payments for certain permitted expenses for the promotion of tourism, the organization shall not make any payments over $2,000 without the preapproval of the county. So that used to be $1,500, so we raised that from $1,500 to $2,000, and then also down in that paragraph, in consideration of the organization's administration of the funds, reference here within, the county agrees that $2,750 or 20% of the total yearly excise tax remitted by the county to the organization, whichever amount is less of the Tourism Promotion Fund will be used to help fund the operations of the Walker County Visitor Center. That previously, I believe, was $2,500, we raised that to $2,750 because we increased in these proceeds, and so there's gonna be more invoices and vendors and processing and stuff, and cost of operation going up, we wanted to raise that, so Lacy Wilson with the chamber is here tonight, if there's any questions for, for her or myself, if not, we'll move for a motion to approve this extension of this agreement.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agreement is approved as presented. Okay, this next one's kinda bittersweet, 'cause we're losing one of our full-time team members, but personnel service agreement, this agreement is entered in between Walker County, Georgia, a political subdivision of the state of Georgia, and Robert Wardlaw. Wardlaw has been employed by the county as a full-time Director of Economic Development and Community Affairs Director from March 1, 2018 through December 31st, 2021. The county desires to continue to retain the services of Wardlaw, and Wardlaw agrees to continue to provide services to the county pursuant to the provisions of this agreement. The term of this agreement shall be January 1, 2022, through December 31st, 2022, with either party may terminate this agreement by providing the other party with a minimum of 30 days' advance written termination notice. The services to be provided by Wardlaw under this agreement shall include, but not be necessarily be limited to completion of economic development and community projects that were initiated while Wardlaw was the director and the transition of his previous duties as director to his successor. The county shall pay Wardlaw $1,000 per month for his services rendered, each payment shall be delivered to Wardlaw no later than the last day of each month in which services are provided. Wardlaw would be considered an independent contractor while providing services under this agreement. The parties have executed this agreement the 30th day of December 2021. This would be taken Robert from a W-2 employee to a contract employee as a 1099 contract employee. Again, this would take effective on January the 1st, 30-day provision, either party can, can end this at any time, just a simple notification, so is there any questions or concerns or comments about this service agreement? Hearing none, do we have a motion of the board to approve this service agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Askew for approval, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, service agreement is approved. Okay, the next item that we have is an inmate medical service agreement with the Walker County Sheriff's Office, and we do have, I believe, the sheriff with us still, so we'll ask Sheriff Wilson if he would like to step forward to the podium and just give us a brief overview, this is per his recommendation before the board here tonight.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
From year to year, Walker County Sheriff and the county commission enters into an agreement with a medical provider for medical services to Walker County inmates at the Walker County Jail, and I was notified in November that our current medical provider elected not to continue that contract into 2022, so we sought out a new provider, and we have found one, Dr. Azar Nassar, M.D., out of Dalton, and a physician assistant, Kimberly Griffin, and they form a group, a medical group entitled Correct Med LLC. And we have spoke with them and worked up a contract, and you have the contract in front of you there, that is a annual 12-month contract, it does give each party a 90-day clause to terminate the contract if so desired, and then it also renews every year unless one party notifies the other party, and this is for the amount of $3,500 per month, and it is a contract 1099 type of employment.
Okay?
And they would be on call 24/7 with two visits to the Walker County Jail each week.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and read this service agreements, is whereas OCGA 42-4-4Aid provides in part, shall be the duty of the sheriff to furnish persons confined in jail with medical aid, and whereas Azar Nassar, M.D., is a physician duly licensed in the state of Georgia to provide medical care and services, and whereas Kimberly Griffin, P.A.C., is duly licensed physician assistants in the state of Georgia to provide medical care and services, and whereas Azar Nassar, M.D., and Kimberly Griffin, P.A.C., works through an entity known as Correct, or Correct Med LLC, and whereas the parties here too are, try to enter into this agreement to provide for medical aid and treatment of persons confined in the Walker County Jail. Now therefore be it resolved that for and in consideration of the mutual, convinced herein contained, the parties hereby agree as the following, effective the first day of January 2022, Kimberly Griffin, P.A.C., under the supervision of Azar Nassar, M.D., an agent, as agents of Correct Med LLC, will make calls to the Walker County Jail in Lafette, Georgia, two times per week on a mutual agreeable days and times to examine and provide medical treatment to persons confined in the Walker County Jail who are in need of medical treatment. In consideration for the above described services, Correct Med LLC will be paid the sum of $3,500 per month on a monthly basis during the term of this agreement by Walker County, Georgia. Walker County, Georgia, will debit all such payments to the Walker County Sheriff's Office budget. Appropriately licensed agents of Correct Med LLC will be on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. days a week, due to the health services they require to furnish detainees in the Walker County Jail, as Assar Nassar, M.D., the medical director of the Walker County, and such Correct Med LLC will receive the sum of $3,500 a month to be paid on a monthly basis, to be paid the first of each month during the term of this agreement for the prior month services, which such sum to also be debited to the Walker County Sheriff's Office budget. Correct Med LLC shall maintain enforced during the continuation of this agreement policies of medical malpractice insurance covering insurability, risk at the amount not less than $1 million per occurrence, 3 million aggregate. Said insurance policy shall provide for 60 days prior written notice that the Walker County, Georgia, of any material modification, cancellations, or expiration of the policy. Correct Med shall provide Walker County, Georgia, a copy of the declaration page of said insurance policy prior to the effective date of the agreement, and also copies of the declaration pages of all renewals, modifications, or new insurance policies. Assar Nassar, M.D., Kimberly Griffin, P.A.C., and Correct Med LLC hereby agree to identify and hold Walker County, Georgia, and the Sheriff's Office of Walker County, Georgia, Steve Wilson harmless from any and all liability suits or liability suits or claims arising out of this contract and the examination and treatment of Walker County inmates by themselves or any employees associated or assigned to Correct Med LLC. The terms of this agreement shall be one year. Any party to the contract may cancel this agreement upon 90 days' written notice to all other parties to this agreement. This agreement shall automatically renew successive one-year periods unless any party notifies the other party in writing at least 90 days prior to the anniversary date hereof, which shall be January 1. This agreement shall not be assigned in whole or in part by Assar Nassar, M.D., Kimberly Griffin, P.A.C., or Correct Med LLC without the prior written consent of Walker County, Georgia, and Sheriff Steve Wilson. And then we have the signature pages and the address, as any notifications to be given pursuant to this agreement shall be mailed to the following. Gives the address and information of the Walker County Board of Commission, Sheriff Steve Wilson, Correct M.D. LLC, be it resolved that the Walker County Board of Commissioners hereby approve that within foregoing contract in order that it be spread upon the minutes of the Walker County, Georgia, executed the 30th day, 2021. This has already been signed by Correct Med LLC. So is there any additional questions of the board about this agreement, or any questions to the sheriff?
Sheriff, I think you did a wonderful job finding this company. Ms. Griffin is well-trained, very experienced in correctional medicine, I think she will do a wonderful job with the sheriff's department.
Very pleased meeting her and her knowledge and background, and met with her today, she came over today and kind of got her feet wet, getting ready for the January 1st, start taking phone calls, and we appreciate all the help of the board recognizing this, and it's an unfortunate thing that we have to do is provide medical care, it's one of the requirements of law, and it's a necessary thing to keep inmates healthy. A lot of them come in with health problems and not receiving care, and so as Commissioner Stoltz knows, he's served in that capacity for a number of years, 15-plus years maybe, what, 17?
16.
16, okay, that's pretty close.
Yes, sir.
And Robert did us a great job for 16 years, so he knows firsthand, and I appreciate him leaning on us during this time, and all the input he gave us.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve this service agreement?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion at the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the service agreement's approved. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is purchase order 2022-142 for $44,612 to purchase 10 public service radios for the Sheriff's Office, vehicles, and for the fire trucks. This will be funded out of our 2020 splot. We have our fire chief and EMA director, Blake Hodge, here with us tonight. He's been working on this project, so I'd like for him to give us a brief overview on this purchase.
Good evening. As you mentioned, the request for $44,612 for 10 radios, they're mobile radios that the units that go in the vehicles, eight for the Sheriff's Department, two for the Fire Department, they are going in new vehicles. We're fortunate to be in a position now where it's, we're purchasing it as needed, not as a larger overall replacement, so that helps with the, when we're looking at the projected funding of $1 million over the life of splot, to be just basically halfway there now with, on pace to just use as needed basements for replacement, so appreciate your support. Again, this is something that you'll see, these small requests, over the next three or four years.
So this is in our splot budget, and as he indicated, this is for new vehicles that have been purchased, that are coming into our system, and this will allow new mobile units to go into these vehicles. So any further questions for Chief Hodge? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this purchase order?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Askew, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved as presented. Okay, the next item we have is purchase order 2022-374, this is for the total amount of $53,901.52 to purchase two Ford F-150 Super Cap XL truck. This will be funded out of our FY 2022 budget. There is copies in the agenda packet of the window stickers for both of these trucks. Been working on this for several months, it's been very difficult to find trucks with the chip shortages and parts and supplies, but these trucks retail sticker price is $40,270 each, and this is the same price we've been paying on the government contract price of $26,950.76 each. You will see there's one of these vehicles that is ready for pickup at the dealership, and the other one's still on hold and partially assembled at the assembly plant, waiting on chips. So have no idea when we may get that second one, but there's not many trucks to be had, and felt like we needed to grab these while we can, because we don't have any backup trucks, and we've got a couple of our pickup trucks in that 300,000-mile range that could lay down on us at any time, and so we wanted to get this on the agenda and get these approved. So do we have a motion to approve this purchase for $53,901.52 to produce a Ford?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of this purchase? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved. Okay, next item on our agenda is purchase order 2022-442 in the amount of $459,817.94 to purchase a 2021 Greedall XL 4100V from Tractor and Equipment Company. This is also being funded from the 2020 splot. You've got a copy of the quote from them, this does include a 60-inch ditching bucket and an additional fixed thumb grabber as a standard warranty of two years. This would be paid at time of purchase through our splot funding. This is a large piece of equipment that we very, very much need in our road department. The Greedalls that we currently have, we're going to be surplusing those out, because none of them are optimal at all. We can't use them, they're not worth fixing to us, and so Whitfield County recently bought one of these exact pieces of equipment. We've been over and looked at it, and they demoed it for us, and actually went out on a job with them and saw it in use, and this is a tandem, so this is the large Greedall, and so this definitely checks all the boxes for us, and very excited to move forward with this. So are there any questions or concern about this purchase of the board?
Is this piece of equipment on the yard now?
My understanding it is in stock.
Okay.
I'll have to verify that, but...
Yeah, I just wondered.
But also too, you'll see there, this is the source well-contracted pricing, so this is the government pricing for that, but my understanding is that they did have one in stock. I sure hope so. Don't know how long it may take to get another. But this is definitely a workhorse when it comes with trees down on the side of the road. I know Mr. Blake Moore has used these types of pieces of equipment at the road department, and they are absolute workhorses, and cleaning out ditches and extending out into long culverts, and it's really a key piece of equipment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase order is approved. Okay, the next item we have, this was the amendment we made to our agenda for Resolution AR 68-21, resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint member to the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to all the committees of the board with the approval of the board, and whereas a vacancy exists on the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve as the member of the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, Toby Hill, for the term ending on December 31, 2022. Therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Toby Hill is hereby approved, so resolved and adopted the 30th day, December 2021. Again, we're trying to get more people in our community involved in this, so I asked Commissioner Blake Moore if he had someone in his district that would be a good fit for this, and he submitted Toby's name. I thought that was an excellent recommendation, so I want to move forward with this resolution and move this in the form of a motion that we appoint Toby Hill for term ending December 31, 2022 to the Alcoholic Beverage Board. So do we have a second to this motion?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any discussion at the board about this appointment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Toby has been approved. Appreciate his willingness to serve, and for those of y'all that may not know Toby, he's sitting on the back row tonight. So thank you Toby for being willing to serve and coming down and being with us tonight. Okay, this time is of our meeting, where we do a lot for public comment, up to five minutes, if anybody that would like to come and speak before the board tonight. We do ask you to keep your comments, preferably to things within Walker County that we can have an influence on, or can make a difference with, so is there anyone tonight that would like to come before the board and speak? Yes, sir, come up please. I don't have my remote, so I'll have to just keep this the old style. Please state your name for the record, if you would please.
Ray Marsh, lifelong citizen of Walker County. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
After a year in which we've dealt with the outrage from the appearance of the Lone Ranger in this very commission meeting, the embarrassment for the board and for the citizens of Walker County as a whole, I had hoped that Walker County would have moved in a direction to be more inclusive of the minority communities in county government. I'm saddened to see that as a board, you have not appointed more minorities to open board seats this year. I personally have offered suggestions to the board of qualified individuals that would be willing to serve the citizens of Walker County in some of these positions. I hope, no, I pray, that in the coming year, as a board, you will diligently seek out the individuals from the minority communities in your districts to serve in Walker County government. I believe that diversity of ideas will be an asset to the county, and it requires the input from all citizens of Walker County. By being more inclusive, perhaps some citizens will not have to serve in multiple capacities or multiple boards, as we've seen here tonight with Mr. Michael Haney. We need everyone included in Walker County government. Grateful for having a commission, a board now, so it's not an individual, but we must have a voice from every community, and I encourage you gentlemen to seek out the members of the minority communities and to ask them to be a part of this government. Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak tonight? Okay, hearing no one, we'll move to our time of our commissioner comments, so we'll start with Commissioner Blake Moore, District 1.
President, everybody coming out, thank you for speaking up, Brent. And as always, if anybody needs to reach me, call, text, email, I'll get back to you as soon as I can. Thank you.
As Robert said, same thing, appreciate everybody that does take the time to come out and voice their opinion and get involved, because that does help us be a better board, and we appreciate that, Brent. Also, in reference to the fire hydrants, they have been ordered, they're not here yet, so I'll keep you posted on that. And I did want a shout-out to Robert Wardlaw. Appreciate his endless and tireless work that he's done to help the county prior to us coming on board and since we've come on board. Appreciate that he's willing to help in the transition. I know Ms. Stephanie's going to do us a wonderful job, but there is that transition, and I think that everybody would agree we need that, and I thank you, Robert, for being willing to do that for us and help her, so we really appreciate your service.
Yes, thank you, Robert, and I'm really excited about you leaving, because you're going to open up a restaurant, I'm looking forward to eating there, because the maggot cooks some barbecues.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate everything you've done, look forward to your... One thing, and I'm sad Chief Hodge left, because...
Did he leave?
He did leave. So I was reading one of those ACCG magazines we get, and just an interesting thing that came out in that, you know, it's December and it's 60 degrees outside, but it's fixing to get cold next week, and I read that 50% of house fires are from December to February because of heating. So just to throw out there to everybody watching and listening out here, you know, watch out for that, watch out for your neighbors that heat with maybe wood or electric heaters or even medicaricene, because that is something to think about. Robert?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Marsh, thank you, sir, for your comments, appreciate that. As we close this year out, it's hard to believe that we have gone through 2021, and I just want to thank all the Walker County employees for their service, their hard work, and I want to thank everyone who participates and comes to our meetings, it does give us a lot of information and feedback, helps us do a better job. Looking forward in 2022 to serve the citizens of Walker County and District 4. Please, if you have any questions for me, concerns, comments, you can find my personal information on the website, so happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. A few things that I'd like to add as well, I would like to say a big public thank you to Robert Wardlaw. He has been a bigger help to Walker County than probably a lot of people realize. Robert was actually helping me and helping our county way before March of 2018, when he took an official paid position, but even in 2016 and '17, when it's getting started, he brought a lot of skillset to the table, was very instrumental even before you, again, as he come on an employee, helping work through the hurdles and challenges of the Hutchinson-Erlanger lawsuit and negotiations of trying to get that settlement in place, which we were successful in getting done. He's worked on a lot of industry projects, several of which are still in queue, hopefully will come. The one that was recently announced with the Roper Project, you know, I think he put about two and a half years' worth of work into that, and it's going to result in about $118 million additional investment into our community and creating about 646 new jobs. And so there's a lot of things that Robert does behind the scenes that people don't know about or see. He's truly a patron of Walker County, he truly loves this county, and he's going to be missed not being around every day. And he's going to be missed not being around every day. But I'm glad, again, he's opening a restaurant.
Me too.
It's only a couple of blocks away, so if we have any questions or need some help, we can go get him if we have to. But I'm very happy and grateful that he is willing to stay and help us transition. Again, there are several projects that we've got a lot of time and energy in. And you have those relationships that are built with these projects and the people on the other side of the table. And we want to keep that continuity in place. And so thank you, Robert, for all that you've done and all the many things that people will learn about in years to come that you've had a positive influence on. So I think we should give Robert a round of applause. Also too, I wanted to mention, I want to brag on these guys up here sitting next to me. You know, this was a big year of transition. I know I had been here, as y'all know, for four years. These guys coming in new. They had a lot to learn. The odds were stacked against us with some people thought we couldn't do it, thought we couldn't pull it off, thought we'd all be sitting up here elbowing and hitting and kicking and whatever. But that's not who we are. That's not what this board's about. These guys are all professional. They all bring a lot to the table. Couldn't ask for a bunch of better guys to work with. I know most of these meetings, we look like maybe we agree on everything, but I promise you, that's not always the case. We have our conversations and we vet things out and have discussion. And but we work it out. And I think that the bottom line is we work it out, we come to consensus. So when we come to these meetings, things do run professionally and run smooth. But these guys put a lot of time in, and I don't think a lot of citizens realize that. It's more than just two meetings a month. There are dozens and dozens of hours each week that these guys put in along with working a full-time job as well. It's a lot of untold time and attention that these guys work that's not seen in the public as well. So I just wanted to tell each of you very much how much I appreciate you. It's been good working with you through this first year and look forward to even doing more things and being more successful in 2022. So thank you for being a good team members and being positive and helping us transition because people around the state didn't think we could do this. And it's been a very, very smooth transition. So thank you all very much for your dedication and your commitment to Walker County. Also, I just want to tell everybody that we did, you mentioned about fires, but we did have one of our coworkers, Christopher Rush. He works at our maintenance shop. He was home with COVID. And while he was at home, 5:00 in the afternoon on Christmas Eve, his house caught on fire. And he could just, had just a very short amount of time to get out of the house. Him and his parents lost their house, everything in it, and all three vehicles. So please remember Chris Rush and your thoughts and prayers and as he recovers with his health and as they put their life back together. But he's a key member of our team. And just keep Chris and his family in your prayers because they're going through a pretty tough time trying to put everything back together. And I talked to him on the phone the other day, and he told me that he literally walked out of his house with his cellphone. And that's all he had when the fire was over, was just a cellphone. So everything from driver's license to IDs to medical stuff, everything, they're having to completely recreate everything that they had. So be mindful. I know our fire department will come out and put smoke detectors in free of charge for people. Take advantage of that. That's a service that we provide that we want people to use. And our fire department's done an outstanding job the last four or five years putting out hundreds of smoke alarms to give people warnings. So it can happen to any of us. So make sure you've got good smoke alarms. If you don't, a couple of our firefighters will come out and put as many in as you need. So it don't matter how small your house is, how big your house is. They're going to get you covered to make sure you've got adequate protection. They would rather come out on a situation like that and help you with smoke alarms than to come out and help get you out of the house because of a fire. So it's something that they enjoy doing and interacting with the public. So please, please, those of you watching out there tonight, check your smoke alarms tonight. If you haven't done that in some time, and if you don't have working smoke alarms, reach out to the fire headquarters and they will be out. Want to wish everyone a Happy New Years and thank you all for participating and being part of our local government. And at this time, do we have any reason for an executive session? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.